Come on, guys, once a year.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of November 23rd, 2010. Thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Uh, let me see. Greg Pierce, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements. There will not be a city council meeting on the Fourth Tuesday in December. The only regular city council meeting in December will be held on December 14th, 2010. The Holiday Tree Lighting Event will be held on Thursday, December 2nd, a week from Thursday, at 5:30 PM, right down here at the Veterans Memorial Recreation Center. So we encourage all of you to attend. It's a lot of fun. Presentations. Beautification Task Force Awards. Councilwoman O'Connell.
Thank you. Somebody asked me earlier this evening what number of awards this was, and I couldn't tell them because I, we've done so many. So my secretary over there is saying fifteen. So it's the Fifteenth Annual Beautification Task Force Awards, and I welcome everyone who's here. This started out as a program to encourage people to beautify their homes, to increase their curb appeal, and to try to recognize people in the community that have done that and have maintained their homes over the years. So, before I start on the actual awards, I'd like to introduce the Beautification Task Force members. This is a group of people who have dedicated a lot of time and effort over the years, a lot of patience with each other, to help San Bruno out. They do the awards. They run Operation Clean Sweep, if you've ever participated in that or heard about it, which is the first Saturday in May. And we welcome all of you to come and help out. We go and clean up the city. So before I do much further, there are right over there, the first person you see is Emil Hans, who's our newest member, Carol Martiardi, Bridget Lopez, Martiardi, sorry, Bridget Lopez, Melanie Tobin, Sally Calvert, and a few people who were not able to make it, Joan Burrell, Sandy Headley, Carolyn Lemingid, and Felicia Nerby over there, who is going to run our PowerPoint program, and she is with Recology. So, I'd like to acknowledge and thank former Mayor Larry Franzella. Through his efforts, the Prudential California Brilliance Community Support Fund, which is a mouthful, donated the signs, which we'll be showing you in a second, and the money for the awards. Each Prudential associate contributes a portion of their personal income to the fund that is used to support activities in the community. To quote Mr. Franzella, "The company has long supported this program as we truly believe in the positive effort that it creates in the community." In the past, we have held the Beautification Task Force Award presentations on the first council meeting in October. The Glenview Fire changed everything. Council meeting dates were uncertain, and the Beautification Task Force members felt it would be unseemly to have a grand celebration of people's homes when so many of our friends and neighbors were now without. It was decided to scale down the program and to postpone it until tonight. We have invited only six members of our community here to receive the modest awards, but our very heartfelt gratitude for jobs well done in their efforts to enhance the community. In the past, we've had many people who have been nominated, and we would show everybody's home, and we'd have three winners from each category, and we'd have quite a few people here. But as I said, we decided to scale it down. So those people who here really truly deserve it, and though there were other people nominated, we will acknowledge them at another time. So, I'm going to go down there so we can do the rest of it. Thank you. The first place winners, well, everyone will receive a modest check. Everyone will receive a certificate from the city. Everyone will receive a rosette, and acknowledgement of what they've done and accomplished. The first category is improved single-family residence, and as you see, it's where they have been major improvements to the front exterior to enhance curb appeal. And the second place winners I know are here. They're the people from 310 Palomar Court, Andrew and Helen O'Brien. So Andrew and Helen O'Brien. Oh, no, I'm sorry, they're not here. They're the only ones not here. The first place people are Mr. and Mrs. Francesco Arika, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Magrilla, is that right, from 230 Madison Avenue. And are you here? Come on up. So if you want to take one thing?
Yeah.
And do you want to take the big thing?
The big.
And here, I'll give you the certificate. So would you like to say something? You don't have to, no, okay. Well, we thank you very much. Our second category is zero landscaping, and as you can see, it's landscaping that is low water use and drought, low water use and drought resistant. And our second place winner is Michael, winner is Michael Greenblatt. Is Michael here? No, I'm sorry. This is his home. And first place winners are the Chu family from 455 Cunningham Way. And are you here? Come on up. We have the cameras on you that way. So we have the certificate and the plaque, and we hope you put the plaques in your front yard and our product.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead. The motivation for the result, oh, the motivation for the result was due to the gophers. Ever since we moved into that house, we've been fighting the gophers. So I finally said, okay, fine, you can have the lawn I'm going to put in. Just landscaping that will be pretty. And so I try to plant flowers that bloom at different times of the year. And whenever I'm working out there and people walk by, they always say how much they enjoy it. And so it's just been a pleasure for me, and I was just so thrilled to be acknowledged even further. So thank you all.
And our third category is single-family residence, and is the curb appeal of the front exterior of the house is obvious and a benefit to the neighborhood. And the second place is 460 Popular with Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez. Are you here? So we'll give him the certificate. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Just that, yeah, thank you. Sorry, my wife isn't here. It's been on my honey-do list for about 25 years. So we finally got to it. Thanks.
The next, that's all for the presentation. As I told you, it'd be short and sweet. But after this, we're going to take just, oh, I'm sorry, didn't we do first place?
No.
I do this every year. I do one thing wrong. First place category, thank you, guys, is 786 Elm with the Corey family. Are you here? Oh, there you are. You should have said something. So do you get, which would you like? Would you like the rosette? And would you like the plaque? That's the heavy. And here's your certificate and your check.
Thank you.
Thank you. And would you like to say something?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. That's what I get for not looking at my notes. Okay. The last piece that we'd like to do is, and I'll get my assistant get set up here, the city staff has been doing remarkable job. Even with the disaster and all the other things that the city has been doing, the park and rec people have kept up our parks and put a beautiful face, shining face on our city, and they're our unsung heroes right now. So I would like Steve Freitas to come up. He's our Parks and Facility Manager, and this fortuitous that we're doing this tonight because this is his 31st and a half year of service, and tomorrow is his last day of work. So we definitely like to acknowledge him, and he's going to go over all the other people that are in his part of his team. So if you could just say, want to say something?
Thank you very much. It is a pleasure to make this my last formal bit of business. I am proud of all these people, as I know you are in the community, is Renee Walsh, who happens to be here, Park Supervisor. Jeff Madonich, who couldn't make it on vacation, but would have been here, another Park Supervisor. Dan Burrows, Larry Serini, John Di Olivera, Paul Niehooser, Bob Magny, Kevin Mayhar, Ed Nichols, Mari Polini, who happens to be here, John Rosewitz, Tim Thompson, Steve Vedder, and Jerry Wilson. And they're the ones that make it all happen. It's kind of ironic because a few weeks ago, I happened to be in City Hall, and the mayor was there, and so was the city manager, and she said, "Oh, I just want to commend you on the job well done on San Bruno Avenue with the pruning." I said, "Hey, let me get the person on the phone that really did this. I'm just the orchestrator, and these are the people that make it happen." So I'm very proud of them. They've been there for me, been there for the community, and very proud of them. So want to thank you, and thank you for the recognition. So, okay.
I just have a few pictures. These are some of the parks that these people maintain. I took these pictures just last week. Despite all the other things that they're responsible for, they still manage to keep our parks beautiful. And you can, Felicia's just going to kind of flip through them all. Some of these parks are tucked away. This is Forest Lane Park. If you stop there just a second, behind that is 380. So they maintain this park beautifully, and you would never know that the freeway is right there. Commodore Park. So I just wanted to acknowledge them. I know a lot of us see City Park a lot, or we drive by different places, but some of the smaller parks, this is Seventh, no, this is still Commodore, I think, Seventh Avenue Park. Most people don't know where that is, but I used to play there when I was a little child. Not so little, but young, high in the field. And this is the other end. Can you stop a second? And this is how ingenue, inventive, they are. My mouth is sticking. This sign, what used to be one of the entrance signs on El Camino to San Bruno, and they took it and reworked it and made it an entrance sign to the City Park. So we don't waste very much in San Bruno. So thank you all.
Well, thank you, Irene, and for doing this for so many years in the Beautification Task Force. You guys are doing a great job. And tomorrow's Steve's last day, and I think you should cut the grass. All right, thank you, Steve. Congratulations to all the winners. Very well deserved.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for this exciting meeting. If not, then you can go get some cookies before you head out. Review of the agenda, item number five. Any changes? Everybody okay with the agenda? All right. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 9th, 2010, and special closed session meeting of November 15th, 2010. Changes, errors, omissions. Seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action that may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on item number seven, consent calendar? Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. A question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Carrie. Right into item number eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We're going to hold a public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance of the City of San Bruno, adding Chapter 12.96195 to the San Bruno Municipal Code, which creates the Glenview G rebuild overlay zone and associated development regulations for the properties damaged or destroyed by the Glenview Fire, and amends the zoning map to rezone the properties damaged or destroyed by the fire to R1G. Staff, please.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you remember, back in October, the City Council gave direction to staff to prepare ordinance amendments in order to simplify and expedite the rebuilding process related to the Glenview neighborhood. Staff has prepared these ordinance changes, which are attached to the staff report, and also presented these to the Planning Commission last week, and the Planning Commission forwarded these to you with a favorable recommendation. Regarding the current process, people who want to add on to their new home or want to build a new home basically fall into one of two categories. Homes that fit within the development regulations and homes that choose to exceed one of the development regulations. For homes that fit within the development regulations, the process will remain unchanged. They can submit plans to the Community Development Department, and at that time, we will do the structural review as well as the architectural review at the same time. Structurally, the homes must be consistent with the California Building Codes, and from an architectural standpoint, the homes must be consistent with the residential design guidelines. However, for the homes that do choose to exceed a development standard, the process will be changed as a result of this ordinance amendment. First is the approval body. As the council knows now, if you choose to exceed a development regulation like floor area ratio, lock coverage, height, the current process is that you first are heard by the Architectural Review Committee meeting, and after that meeting, they forward it to the Planning Commission, which has the final decision authority. And they make sure that there's neighborhood compatibility findings, that your home's consistent with the residential design guidelines, and a number of other findings. What this ordinance amendment would do is take out the Planning Commission requirement and simply make the Architectural Review Committee the final approval body. The same rules will apply. You still need to be consistent with the residential design guidelines, still to make all the same compatibility findings, but it'll cut the review time in about half. Regarding public noticing, neighbors will still get a chance to comment on any of the homes that exceed a development regulation. What will change is instead of it going to the newspaper, publication in the newspaper, which is costly, as well as adds on a little bit of time, there will be, all the plans will be posted on our website. Neighbors can comment on them. We will also notify the immediate neighborhoods as well as a wider range of neighborhoods, wider range of neighbors when these applications come before us. And it will be the same process. Architectural Review Committee will hear the neighborhood's comments and take those into consideration when they make their findings. The third thing is regarding non-conforming situations. And what a legally non-conforming situation is, is commonly known as something that's grandfathered in. Basically, development regulation that was built before the current codes. In this neighborhood, there were few. These were developed in the 50s and 60s, and a majority of our development regulations are the same now as they were then. The most common things that were considered non-conformities are three-foot setbacks from the side yard property line, where five feet is required, as well as slightly smaller garages. Our current code requires that these go all the way up to the Planning Commission. If a house is destroyed by a fire, in order to continue that non-conformity, these code changes would allow the Community Development Director to approve those during the building review process. Regarding the method of implementation, this is an overlay zone, and what an overlay zone means is that it will just apply to these 55 properties in the Glenview neighborhood that were either destroyed or severely damaged by the fire. So people who are going through major construction process will be able to apply this code. We sent out a neighborhood comment. We received few comments. They were all supportive. The one question that we got was, how are you going to make sure that these homes are compatible with the existing neighborhood, even with this new expedited process? And I think the simple explanation is, the rules have not changed. They'll still have to be compatible with the residential design guidelines. There'll still be neighborhood comment allowed, and your home will still have to be compatible with the neighborhood. If the council chooses to do the first reading tonight, the second reading will happen in December, and the ordinance will go into effect in mid-January. So with that, I could take any questions.
Any questions of staff?
If you might, if I must. What, you explain the public notice that'll be wider range? What would that actually?
It'll be the same range. Actually, in the ordinance itself, it says that we have to notify the immediate neighborhood, neighbors. But what we'll do is, we'll use the same 300-foot notice. But what we'll make sure to do is, instead of using the county assessor rolls, we'll use the updated contact information that the neighbors have provided, since people have, you know, new addresses that may not be forwarding correctly.
Any other questions of staff? All right, this time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public like to speak to the council on this item? All right, seeing none. If we close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from talking or asking questions on this.
Moved to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
So Carrie.
Your chair, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to start this discussion and get over. I think the main key here is that we don't, the main reason for our review process is to scrutinize designs and give the public, give the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors and the area, a chance to review ahead of time what's being proposed. And in some cases, it may affect some immediate neighbors directly, and that gives them an opportunity to voice their opinion. And I think it's warped since 1989. I also recognize that these 55 families have been through enough, and, you know, and it's still going to be a long road for them. And I think it's great that they would consider and plan to rebuild and start the next part of their lives here in San Bruno. What I don't want is, I'm concerned about what may be proposed with no context. Say a, you know, a home gets proposed where there are no homes there now. It's like the first home in, you know, in a tract development where no other homes are, you know, you see. Today, we get additions, we get homes, infill homes, and you have a neighborhood already established, you know, with homes adjacent to each other. So you don't really have anything to compare. So I think there's going to be some, some real concern there. But I'm glad that we do have the design guidelines that we can follow. And I think it's, I think it's a good idea to streamline it to a certain extent. I don't think anyone's going to be rushing too much, but I believe to ease the pain, not have them pay for permits and things, but to, but still maintain our level of scrutiny and quality still help.
Anyone else? I agree, we're, and this is not just the first, you know, situation that this catastrophe has caused. It's, we're in uncharted territory in a lot of ways in this city now. This is just one of them. But I believe, as we've done in the last, you know, 11 or so weeks, we've gotten through it, and we'll get through this, too. So I look forward to the rebuild, I really do. It should be a very exciting and emotional experience for everyone. So, anyone else? Action by the council?
With that, I'd make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to waive the first reading. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the ordinance for adoption. Excuse me? Introduce the ordinance for adoption.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And thank you, staff, for the great job. Great job. The Planning Commission also. Item number nine, public comment for items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to speak to the council on items not on the agenda? Please state your name and your street name.
My name is Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive, representing Friends of Fleetwood. I'd like an agenda item for the next city council meeting, and I don't see why it would take, it couldn't be done by then, regarding the cutting of the Grand and Glorious Tree at 2570 Catalpa Way. A tree whose branches provided beautification and would have kept many birds warm tonight. This was the neighborhood tree when the building 2570 was the Rollingwood Clubhouse. Now I know that the, since it's city property, that the city council can do what they darn well please without consulting the neighborhood. But I think at least it is owed the neighborhood a report in detail as to why the tree was cut down. Who authorized it? Who cut it down? And when will it be replaced? Incidentally, I don't care. I mean, the city, it's a city's building, but somebody should move, remove the debris from the roof of that building from the tree being cut. And the building itself is in despicable condition. The wood on the building is, the paint is peeling, and it's, it is, it is despicable. My second item is a request that the Honorable City Council contact PG&E regarding the section of pipeline from Catalpa Way to Rollingwood Drive. Now this, there was a notification, and I was even going to compliment PG&E on this, for all the neighbors, including myself, and I don't, I don't, my house is across the street from, on Fleetwood Drive, not bordering the pipeline itself. They came around, they delivered, they posted a notice saying that there would be work done on the pipeline, yet there's been no report on the results. This is critical because of insurance and value of the property. Insurance companies didn't know there was a pipeline there. Then all of a sudden, the world knows there was a 30-inch pipeline there. Now they don't know the condition of the pipeline, let alone the neighbors haven't been notified as to what was done when PG&E did their work there, and that, and the condition and the status of that pipeline. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. We'll try to get some answers for you. Anyone else in public comment? The right to conduct of business. First item is item A, receive oral report and review status of local emergency related to the Glenview Fire area and adopt a resolution continuing declaration of local emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is one that has been on your agenda several times in the recent past since the September 9th disaster in the Glenview neighborhood. Specifically, that item requests your authorization to continue the declaration of a local emergency related to the incident in the Glenview neighborhood and its aftermath. As you know, that declaration or proclamation of emergency allows the city certain authorities that it would not otherwise have in order to assure that work is completed in an efficient, timely, and streamlined manner. timely, and streamlined manner, specifically as it is needed for a response to the disaster situation. In this particular case, and now that we are 10 or so weeks out from the immediate situation of the disaster, we are, are close reaching the time point where it will no longer be necessary to continue the disaster circumstances. And in fact, I'm not now expecting at this moment the need for any further actions under the emergency umbrella between now and the time that we would discontinue the emergency declaration. However, it does remain important to continue this procedure for the near term as we would like to at least get through the first major part of the rainy season in order to evaluate any required activities to secure the Glenview, the damaged area in the Glenview neighborhood, and more specifically, those lots that have been, that the homes have been removed, so there is a great deal of open area in the immediate blast vicinity. There is also a condition of property that, in the Crestmore Canyon, at the mouth of the Crestmore Canyon, which is immediately adjacent to the blast site, that needs our continuing attention in order to assure that the rainy season does not create additional damage that, again, would need immediate attention. For that reason, we're asking your action tonight to continue, to continue the local emergency. And I failed to mention earlier, the, the proclamation or the, the resolution that you're being asked to approve tonight would allow continued action without, for, for the city to enter into contracts as it might become necessary without utilizing the competitive bidding process, which is called for in state law. Again, I don't expect additional need to utilize that authority, but would like your action in order to make that possible, should it become necessary.
Any questions of city manager? Action?
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution continuing the declaration of local emergency.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And I believe we have a?
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I had a, thank you for your action. I, I also wanted to respond to a question that is generally within this topic area that was asked at a previous meeting when we discussed a, the continuation of the, of the disaster circumstances, and that was what have been the expenditures that the city has incurred to date in response to the Glenview Fire Emergency. You have in front of you a summary of those costs, and I would encourage you to understand this as, as a capture of, first of all, costs only to date, but specifically costs that go beyond those that would have normally been incurred and were budgeted for normal city operations. As the city council is, I'm sure, well aware, there has been a substantial expenditure of time particularly related to immediately necessary disaster response and initial recovery action items that has been undertaken by staff during normal work hours. In other words, without incurring additional actual cost for the city, but causing the deferral, let's say, of other programs, projects, and activities and/or more fully absorbing your limited staff time resource. So that, those costs do not show on this page. This page only addresses costs that are above budget and are directly attributable to the disaster incident. Specifically, those costs total $2,125,000. I would call to your attention one additional item, and that is that we have attempted to break these out in general categories of the initial response period and the recovery effort. You'll see that the initial response is particularly identified as representing that period from Thursday evening, September 9th, through September 11th, a period of just about 48 hours. That is how the state disaster response programs categorize the initial response period. It is generally that period of time that emergency crews were on duty at the scene and generally involved in fighting the fire, conducting rescue operations, rescue and evacuation operations, and then cleaning up the immediate firefighting activity. As you see, there are approximately just over $200,000 in costs that are directly attributable to overtime and supplies related to that effort. The vast majority of the costs that the city has incurred, has occurred since that immediate response period and is generally categories, categorized as related to the recovery effort. You'll see in the list that we've provided that the majority of those recovery costs relate to contracted activities that have previously been in front of the city council for construction and design-related actions to stabilize and ensure the continuing stability of the Crestmore Canyon. You'll also note that these costs, we've captured in one summary format, costs that have both actually been expended and costs that have been approved but yet, not yet expended, and those are referred to as encumbered costs. So, again, the $2 million cost is roughly 50% is attributable to activities related to stabilizing Crestmore Canyon, and the majority of the remainder of those costs are related to the ongoing recovery activity. This chart shows only those costs that have occurred since the incident on September 9th and continuing essentially through today. But I think it gives you an idea of the scope and the magnitude of the types of things that have incurred costs for the city and, I, I would say, will continue to be significant cost items for the city going forward, along with a variety of things that remain unknown, but also those items that are continuing to emerge and to be more important as we, as we move down the path towards full recovery of the neighborhood and of our community. I don't know if it's the council's interest, and I'm not really prepared tonight, but in just in anticipating a possible question that you might have as to how much of these costs are immediately, are directly recoverable under the disaster reimbursement formulas. And at this point, I will only say that we are actively involved through the finance department and with the assistance of expert consultants who are assisting us in evaluating, assembling, documenting, and evaluating the costs that we have incurred related to the state and the federal agencies' cost recovery programs and reimbursement procedures. So at this point, I'm not able to address that specifically, but we will certainly provide additional information to the city council as we move forward.
City manager, I see, it says mutual aid response costs incurred by other agencies are not included. Is anywhere in here the site cleanup?
The debris, the demolition and debris removal activities that were undertaken by, under the jurisdiction of San Mateo County are not included in here.
Right.
There is a, you'll see there is a, one item, I believe it's $25,000, that's associated with debris removal, but that was a very small ancillary activity associated with that general activity.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair. On, on that issue with the San Mateo County, the health, health services, who pays that bill? Does the county pay that?
It's my understanding that, that the county had entered into a, a previous agreement prior to undertaking the work. They have a letter agreement with PG&E that, at, at least my understanding, and again, the part, the city is not a party to that agreement or to the, the costs or the, the activities or the relationship between the county and PG&E related to this. But it is my understanding that there is an arrangement by which PG&E will directly reimburse the county for those costs.
So, okay, so we'll, we anticipate a, some sort of document that absolves the city and the residents from any payment of that or any, any involvement?
It, we're not anticipating any documentation. It, it, it is clear in the relationship that was entered in before the work began between the county and PG&E and then subsequently between the county and the individual residents, that when the city is indemnified for activities that are related to the demolition and debris removal, and that that activity is being, was completed under the jurisdiction and, and through the county and its relationship with contracted services.
I just want, you, you mentioned that the initial incident response costs, the $173,000 or the $209,000, that was all with public safety, all related to the actual fighting of the fire and cleanup of the fire?
The...
At, at the site?
First of all, let me, let me say one thing that I forgot to say, but it's not related to your question, is that these are only the city of San Bruno's costs.
Right.
And they are only related to overtime or extraordinary costs. They do not cover by any means all of the people who, for example, were already on duty. But the answer to your question is, for the most part, these are public safety, police and fire responders, and the vast majority of the cost is overtime. There, there was a substantial response also by public works staff in particular that was also on overtime, and those costs are included as well.
I understand that you have to document this and for future reimbursement and, you know, state, state, state reasons, but I think it's very important that the community knows what, what costs that the city went through, and not just for the bravery and the, you know, and all, all the tireless efforts up at the site, but city staff and the volunteers and the, and, I mean, the part-time people down in, in various areas of the city throughout that weekend and then ongoing for the coming weeks. Whether that's, we can recoup that or not, I think that's important to know, how much, how much the city's invested in, you know, in the, in the recovery.
Well, I...
Do you have any idea how much the mutual aid cost is going to be? Do you have any round numbers or you don't care to say or? What is 400 first responders?
How much does it cost to have 400 first responders on overtime?
A lot.
It costs a lot. No, I, I don't have an estimate at that time, but it, is that correct? We don't have?
Okay.
I, I would, I'm anticipating it's a very large number. Obviously, we had, as you indicated, over 400 first responders. That does not include the people who responded, who assisted in the EOC and, and other activities. I can tell you that the, our estimate at the current time for regular salaries that, for example, your department directors who responded, many of whom worked throughout the night and who have continued to devote substantial portions of their daily activities to this response and recovery effort, regular salaries that are not accounted for in this list are estimated in the $200,000 range. Benefit costs attributable to those salaries would add additional costs, so. And I guess I would say as well, and I think you alluded to it in your comments, Councilmember Ibera, that the financial impact does, does really not begin to express the, the significance of the response and the effort that has been applied primarily by your city staff, but literally by hundreds of people throughout the county and the state.
Any other questions? Let's go to item B, receive a quarterly investment report from the city treasurer.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, as of September 30th, the city held the following account balances: 12.7 million in the San Mateo County investment pool, 11.1 million in the local agency investment fund, and 8.1 million in securities held at Union Bank. Please note, however, that during the month of September, 3 million of securities held at Union Bank matured. Now because of the Glenview Fire, it was decided to remain in a more liquid position as the immediate cash needs were not yet known. As these needs become more clarified, every effort will be made to bring our investments in balance in accordance with our investment policy. Furthermore, with respect to the San Mateo County Investment Pool's Lehman Brothers investment, Congresswoman Spear and Eschew are still pressing the case for the Treasury Department to reimburse those public entities which lost money. Because, however, of the recent midterm elections, their efforts will not resume until the next Congress convenes in January 2011. Furthermore, at the October meeting of the San Mateo County Investment Oversight Committee, it was revealed that the county treasurer's office has received numerous offers for these securities, but has decided to wait for the Lehman bankruptcy case to develop further. The belief, the belief is that as that case nears completion, the price may rise. Currently, these, the secondary market right now, these securities are trading at approximately 22 cents on the dollar. After consulting with those involved in the bankruptcy, it's believed, once it's resolved, which is expected to be about the third quarter of 2011, the price may rise to 35 cents realistically on the dollar. So they've made a conscious decision to wait, wait it out until it resolves itself. Again, it's expected to be nine months from now, approximately. Updates on the efforts in Congress and the bankruptcy proceedings will be made available as developments warrant. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Good. Any questions of our city treasurer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Item 10C, receive a report and provide direction regarding improvements for Station 52 funded by PG&E. Chief.
I'm the mayor, members of the city council. Good evening. Tonight, I'm providing you with a report regarding improvements for Fire Station 52 with funds from PG&E. In October 2010, the city received a check in the amount of $15,000 from PG&E, as did many residents in the Glenview area for the impacts caused by the September 9th incident. These funds were unsolicited and without any requirements for expenditure of the funds. At a previous council meeting, the council requested staff to provide options for the expenditures of these funds. After staff review, the report, this report outlined some options for the expenditures of these funds. There are two projects in the future, future capital improvement program that deserve consideration. One is the Fire Station 52 re-roofing project proposed for 2011-12 with an estimated cost of $40,000. This project is, has unidentified funding at this time. In the past week, staff has received three informal quotes for the project ranging from 18 to $25,000. These quotes do not include emergency, contingency for dry rot or structural repairs. The second project in the CIP is the Fire Station 52 seismic evaluation study for the station building. The CIP shows a cost estimate, cost estimate for the project of $20,000, and this project is also unfunded. A third option would be for the use of these funds to replace equipment such as chainsaws, hoes, turnout gear that is due for replacement. This option is estimated to cost between $10,000 and $15,000. Previous council discussions suggest an interest in installing air conditioning at the, at Station 52. Staff has reviewed this option and determined that two-window air conditioning units should provide adequate cold air circulation with properly located units. should provide adequate cold air circulation with properly located units. This project is estimated at $2,000. The cost to install air conditioning throughout the station is estimated at $12,000. Should City Council recommend the window unit installation, we would have approximately $13,000 to apply to one or another project. And just to remind City Council, there is not a timeline established for the expenditure of these costs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
To the Chair.
Vice Mayor.
Looking at this, obviously, there's not enough money to go around unless PG&E's willing to contribute more toward this great effort in the Fire Station 52. But with what we have, I think it's important to invest it back in to the facility. The seismic, I think, is something we should do in capital improvements. I know there's concern on roof. The AC is something I know I brought back, but with $2,000 is very modest and reasonable. But I'm also looking at the equipment, i.e. chainsaw. And when you say the chainsaw, you're talking about purchasing the chainsaw, or you're talking about something different?
We could definitely replace chainsaws themselves, I think. In the long term, we're looking at typically a cost of up to $500 to have a chainsaw serviced, either replacing the chain. And we have an opportunity to purchase our own sharpening tool device and maintenance tool. That's probably cost about, I want to say, $1,500. That would prevent us from, we could do our own servicing, and I think it's a good long-term investment to do it that way.
And how often do we have to go out to have this chainsaw sharpened for $500?
Typically, twice a year, easily.
Okay, so that's, I, yeah, I would say that obviously, items like that, I'd like to make a suggestion to the council, see what everybody else thinks as far as investing some of this in the equipment. Maybe the hoses are most critical, the chainsaw, because obviously, I think it's an investment that will pay for itself. I'd like to still recommend the $2,000 for the AC, the turnout. I don't know if those are critically needed at this point, or if they're in reasonable condition, because I think those are the most expensive within the equipment items.
You are correct, yeah. And we do have a replacement schedule, but typically, we fall behind in replacing those.
So if you feel that's the most necessity, is it within the equipment that the folks use? I'd agree with that. If you feel the turnouts can be held off for the regular budgetary item, then maybe whatever's left over between the other items you mentioned and the equipment, the AC goes to the roof. Those are just some of my thoughts.
Anyone else? Ken?
My comment is that, what do we know? I mean, staff, you know, you should know what's most important, what's more pressing, and I would leave it up to you. I mean, if that's what it is, is chainsaws and hoses, you know, and air conditioning, I definitely wouldn't spend any money, $20,000, on a study at this point. So, and, you know, if the roof needs it, then that'll come, you know, in time, so. $13,000, $15,000, I think you can put to good use.
There's no question. And I think, you know, that option would serve us the best at this time.
Anyone else? Michael?
Are we supposed to tell them what to do? Michael?
Chief, just a question about the equipment. We don't put any funds aside for periodic replacement of this equipment. This isn't something that's budgeted for in your regular...
We have replacement costs for PPE that we put in the budget as replacement, and we have replacement for some of the larger pieces of equipment, typically chainsaws, and the smaller, like hose nozzles, hose, we have a regular cycle, set aside some money. I think we're running a little bit behind on the replacement schedule also, so that would supplement this.
Normally, each year, there are funds in the operating budget which are allocated to equipment purchases, and so what the chief is referring to is that there would be some years, you have, every year, you would have something that you're doing, and as the equipment reaches its useful life, it would be proposed for inclusion in that line item in the budget.
On the other hand, the, anything that's facility-related, like the roof or seismic improvements, would generally never be included in that budget item. That's something we would have to come up with.
That goes through the CIP, correct?
Through the CIP.
The Capital Improvement Program budget is just a, it's a planning and budgeting device. The money all unfortunately comes essentially from the same place. There are no dedicated funds that cover the cost, that are available to cover the cost of our city facility repairs, renovations, improvements. So typically, those resources would need to be allocated from the general fund, fund balance. The two projects that the chief referenced are identified in the capital budget and, or in the capital program, and are planned for consideration to be funded in 11-12.
So my thought process then is, the equipment could potentially be eventually replaced, whereas these other things, we would definitely have to identify funds from somewhere to actually address those. And they would not be addressed unless we actually pull funds from somewhere, from the general fund, to address those other issues, which makes one of those options to me, at this point, a little more attractive, because those funds may never materialize, or at least not for a long time. So, something to consider.
I agree. $20,000 is a lot for a study.
So do we need a motion on this, or just direction, consensus of the council?
I would think just direction and consensus.
Right. Sounds like you have direction to get some chainsaws and hoses and turnouts, and is that...
AC.
Or fans, whether...
Or anything you have left over for the roof.
Just to be clear, you're authorizing the chief to utilize the whole of the $15,000 for equipment purchases as he believes is, would be priorities for the department's operations, and for the installation of window unit air conditioning at Station 52?
Yeah, if in fact there's enough money left over for that, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Ken? Got it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Item 10D, receive report on proposed ordinance adding new chapter 1.35 to developer indemnification to Title I, general provision to the San Bruno Municipal Code. City Attorney.
And council members, what we're proposing for you to review and receive tonight is a small amendment to the city code, but a significant one, something we actually worked on prior to the events in September. It was just, in reviewing the code, this was one matter we wanted to bring before you. It's called developer indemnity. It means where the city has gone and approved some development, whether anything from a building permit all the way up to a very large development, and that development is challenged in court, and the city is usually taken along as a third party or real party in interest. The costs that the city would incur, legal fees and costs, have to be indemnified by the developer. Typically, what San Bruno staff has done in the past is, for larger development, certainly included as a condition of development, this same form of indemnity. Back in 2002, there was an Attorney General's report, opinion, that said as long as there's an ordinance in place, the city can require this indemnity, whether or not it's a condition of development. So as a safeguard, just to make sure it's there, anytime the city might get taken to court in the future on a developer, development project, with this ordinance in place, in your city code, you will always be insured to have your costs covered by the developer. We've seen this work in other cities on the peninsula, and we feel that you should have it in your city code. So it's simply on tonight for you to receive the report and give direction to bring it back at perhaps the next meeting for introduction of the ordinance. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions of the City Attorney?
Good idea.
Action?
No action.
No action.
It's not an action. Bring it back.
Bring it back.
Bring it back.
Sounds good.
That's it. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the transit corridor pedestrian connection improvement project and appropriating grant and redevelopment funds in the amount of $350,000.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight to discuss the Transit Corridor Pedestrian Connection Improvement Project. But before we get into it, I just want to be very clear that this project is not connected to the transit corridor specific plan that's under development. They share similar title, and it does wander through the transit corridor, and while some design elements are similar with that, with that specific plan and consistent with it, they are separate processes, and this is a sort of standalone capital project that is, does not stem from the specific course. So there should be no issues with a potential conflict like there, I know there is for the specific plan. But to get started, the purpose of the project is to improve conditions for pedestrians along San Bruno Avenue, Huntington Avenue, and El Camino Real, and it's funded by a grant project called the Transportation for Livable Communities Grant, which the city had successfully applied for funding, and that program is a sort of a Bay Area-wide program to improve transportation for communities, make it connections between modes of transportation more convenient, and with a heavy emphasis on pedestrian and bicycle use. So this project does just that. The last time council saw this project briefly was in August, when the council committed for three different federally funded projects, a local match and a commitment to complete the projects. This is one of those projects. This is also included in the draft 2010-11 CIP, which I believe you are under review. The reason why we're bringing it forward tonight is because we want to make sure we are on pace to deliver according to Caltrans' schedule for managing of the grant funds, which they are the grant fund manager. And so because we want a complete design in early winter, we wanted to make sure we're on schedule, so that's why we have a separate authorization tonight. The features briefly is a streetscape project, so we have street trees, some benches and recycling and trash, recycling and trash receptacles, some wayfinding signs, accessible curb ramps, some landscaping and lighting features, and if funding is available, a public art option, any of which would be coordinated, of course, with the Culture and Arts Commission. Here is the layout here, so let's get oriented. Up here at the top, we have the San Bruno BART station. Project area runs along Huntington Avenue underneath the I-380 overpass here, continues up San Bruno Avenue, and then we have along El Camino Real and under the I-380 overpass. The things that the staff is proposing to install are a series of street trees and benches and trash slash recycling receptacles to create pedestrian refuges along Huntington and San Bruno Avenue. For folks that are already walking, and for to encourage more folks, these elements are known to stimulate pedestrian use and make it more likely that pedestrians will use those paths and travel. Underneath the, and so in addition to the pedestrian refuges and street trees, we'll be installing the most current accessible curb ramps, and underneath the I-380 overpass, try to do some landscape improvements and some bulbous to make that area a little more attractive to folks who are passing underneath I-380 and going to the BART station. Similarly, on El Camino Real, I-380 is really a significant pedestrian barrier in terms of perception. It's sort of a darker corridor, not the most easy thing to cross for a first-time pedestrian. So we're looking at some potential innovative lighting concepts. Perhaps this is an area for public art. This is where Caltrans really comes into play. This is their right-of-way on El Camino Real, it's a state highway. So we'll be in conversation with them to see what is actually feasible there, but we hope to make some improvements on that. This is a, like I said, is a grant-funded project, so we estimate about a $50,000 design and about a $300,000 construction. The grant funds the construction portion, so the action that council took earlier in late summer to commit local funds matches the construction phase, so that's about $35,000 for the construction phase. But we think with design, the total sort of local match that we'll have to provide is around $87,500, which would be appropriate, as posed from the redevelopment fund. Like I said, we've planned to design this by winter, early winter, but probably looking at construction to complete more toward the fall of 2011. And if I didn't miss anything in my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff?
If I could start off. First of all, $300,000, I mean, $300,000, $297,500 for 50 trees, benches, some bulbous. Where do we get $50,000 in design for that? I mean, I'm still reeling over $20,000 for a seismic study in the fire station, but now I want $50,000 to place benches, to, you know, to pick areas to place trees? I mean, I think it's a great project and a great opportunity for those corridors, but $50,000 could go a lot, you know, a big chunk of that could go a lot further than, you know, more trees, more benches and things.
Sure. The trees and benches, that is the easy part, and those are most of the elements of the project, however, those are the least costly to design. The trickier concepts are the landscape bulbous, which require a little more of a topographical survey, to make sure that the drainage is right. There's also that sidewalk lighting feature requires more design work potentially with an electrical engineer, which is a little more costly. And we have to walk this thing through approval for Caltrans, so that is a not insignificant amount of staff time that we have to do and fill in out the environmental clearance forms, the field review forms, the application to go out to bid. Those sorts of factors are all a piece of that, $50,000.
All right. Well, my main concern is that we did go through a big, a major study for the transit corridor plan, and we do have ideas and recommendations and anticipate certain changes to those exact corridors. So I hope that the design would, you know, coordinate with what is complement and coordinate with, you know, what was approved through the transit corridor plan. And then, in a subcommittee meeting just last week, I mean, we have to really start thinking about improvements in our lighting. So as much as it might be cool to have in-ground lighting, or artistic to have in-ground lighting, I think the main key is to have adequate lighting, or more than adequate lighting, especially where we have dark corridors, you know, underpasses and things. That's my input.
Okay. Anyone else? Michael?
I'm just curious, do we have any information on the amount of pedestrian traffic through those areas?
We don't have, we don't have counts. We've done several instances of observations of folks who travel between the Bay Hill Office Park, the crossing, the federal archives, from those areas to the BART station and back, but we have not done specific counts at different times of the day. But at different times of the day, we've had those observations, but haven't been able to devote the time to, with the calendar and count the folks.
But there was a significant amount of pedestrian, I mean, enough for us to...
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. And I had another question, but I lost it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Action?
What's the action here?
I'd like to introduce a resolution. I think it's an exciting opportunity for the city. Both of those areas under I-380 really need help, and I'm glad to see that we're doing this. Jim, do you...
All right. Before we take the roll, do you have a question on this? Mr. Lubke?
I'd like to, is there a public comment on this?
Go ahead.
I'm Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive, representing San Bruno citizens for good signage, SBCGS. Mayor, could you ask the presenter to introduce himself, please? I didn't hear who that was.
That's Mr. Jim Shannon.
Who?
Jim Shannon.
Jim Shattuck?
Shannon.
What does he do?
What do you do, Jim? Tell us exactly what you do.
I'm a management analyst and program manager for the Public Services Division.
He's a city employee.
City employee.
Pardon me?
Mr. Shannon is a city employee.
City employee. Thank you. I love the item wayfinding signs. Love it. I've been trying for years to get installation of a wayfinding sign as people come off BART to tell them where to go to the bus station and where to go to the shopping center. And maybe this project could include signs to that effect. Thank you.
Jim?
Actually, I'm happy to report that we have a project that does exactly that and is in development. We have draft locations where those signs should be, and we're moving that forward.
Good. That should make everybody happy. And Councilwoman O'Connell introduced the resolution for adoption. Carol?
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement, commissioning, I hope I say this right, Sayori Ide and Jonathan Russell, and allocating $50,000 from the Public Art Fund for the memorial recognition sculpture. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane, members of the City Council. This next item, if you're consideration, involves the commissioning of memorial recognition sculpture. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm John Alida. I'm the Assistant Library Director, and I work along with the Community Services Director to, as a staff contact for the Culture and Arts Commission. The background on this item is that in January of 2009, the City Council approved the citywide memorial recognition policy. This policy established specific methods and criteria for honoring San Bruno citizens and others who provided exemplary service to the city of San Bruno. At the time of the approval of that policy, the City Council directed the Culture and Arts Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission to work together to recommend a, both a site and a sculpture that would serve as the memorial recognition sculpture. The purpose of the sculpture was to honor individuals alive and deceased who provided the level of service, exemplary service that either the council would like to acknowledge, and also to provide a method for residents to provide personal tribute to loved ones. The commissions formed a joint committee of four members from the Parks and Recreation Commission and three from the Culture and Arts Commission. And that committee met several times over the next period of about one year, where they developed criteria for the sculpture. The first slide that you see here is the site that was selected and recommended by the joint committee. It is a about a 13-foot in diameter triangular piece of land that is adjacent to the Recreation Center on the west side. And after the site was selected, criteria was developed and a call for artists was put out for about a period of 60 days. The committee received 10 responses. Those proposals were then ranked using this set of criteria, which we've placed on this slide to show you what level of weight was given to each of the elements of each piece. Of those 10, three were selected as finalist pieces. And then those three artists were asked to create a scale model of their design so that the committee could be able to make a decision on a final design. We've also, of course, brought the models here tonight for your review. The model on the slide before you is the one that the, that has been recommended by both commissions. Excuse me. The artists are here tonight. It's Jonathan Russell and Sayori Ide. So if you do have any questions about the design, we can have their assistance as well. The, the project, if you have the next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the site. The sculpture consists of three pillar-like pieces that are 16 feet high in height and about three feet in diameter at their base. And they are, as you can see, would be placed about 10 feet apart in the proposed location. The next slide will show you a kind of image superimposed on the site to give you a sense of what it might look like in the location. The cost for the design and the fabrication and delivery of the sculpture is $50,000. This money had been earmarked in the Public Art Fund for this project at the time that it was conceived. The, in addition to the artists' fees, the city staff time would be required for the preparation of the site, namely the excavation of three holes for concrete footings and assistance in installing the piece. In addition to the main design project, there were some items that the commission wanted to draw your attention to. One is that the Culture and Arts Commissioners wanted to recommend that the names of any veterans that had been killed in the line of duty who had, were from San Bruno be placed on any sculpture that was selected. Currently, there are about eight people that fit that criteria that we are aware of. Secondly, and thirdly, the commissioners are aware that they would like both a seating element for the sculpture and to select the appropriate plaque to go on the surface. Those things they wanted to wait a little bit further along until the design was finished so that they could have a better sense of what might go best, since it is going to be part of the, you know, the artistic medium or the site. The timeframe for fabrication and delivery of the piece would be about seven to eight months. So we would be looking at around summer 2011 for the project to be finally installed. In terms of the fiscal impact of the project, as I stated before, the design and fabrication costs are $50,000. This would be allocated from the Public Art Fund. Just to clarify for the public's interest, the Public Art Fund is not a general fund resource. It is a specific fund set up for just the establishment of public art. It is funded in, funded by a portion of permit fees. Currently, there is a balance of about $80,000 in the fund, and the fund currently receives around $20,000 in revenue per year from the portion of permit fees. If that is all I have to talk to you about the project, I'm certainly, I'm sure there'll certainly be some questions, so I'd be happy to answer any of them you might have.
Question, I guess for the artist. What is the material? Step to the podium, please. Thank you.
It's steel.
So, you see, in this depiction here, it looks like it's developed to rust or just age over time?
No, we had considerable conversation back and forth about that. And the final decision was powder-coated steel.
Okay, powder-coated.
So it's impervious. It doesn't change.
And the color?
The color was another issue. You're getting right to the heart of it. The color was another issue. We went back and forth on that. We originally proposed stainless steel, but they thought that was too, too, too much of an impact. So right now, we're looking at, if you go, did I do that?
No.
This was the original. But we came on to this idea of a, sort of, almost like a bronze, slightly reddish quality to blend in with the landscape.
And the plaques for the future, would they be a brass-type of plaque mounted on?
Yes, or we actually have a lot of latitude with that. And because they would go on the sculpture and in some ways change the look of the sculpture, the commission wanted to make sure they had the right material and font, et cetera, selected. So it's one of those items that was still on the to-do list.
So this will evolve with the seating and the different things?
Correct.
Okay.
Through the chair, one of the artists is here. Could you, thank you, Jim, could you maybe give us how this evolved, what it represents, what your vision and what you're seeing in this? Because obviously, it was a stainless steel, and it seemed like it was more closed, the top in the original, unless I was mistaken. And now it seems more open, maybe brought down a little bit. And obviously, the colors changed. But obviously, it was a concept. Every artist has a vision. What was it that brought you to this?
I understand exactly what you're saying. The idea was, when the call for application came out, you were looking for really three different pillars of the community that were being honored and represented. So we came up with this idea that you had three different parts of the community. You had different people who were doing different aspects coming together. And so the idea is the three pillars are, they represent the city, and there's this idea of it coming together as a whole.
Okay.
Any other questions of the artist? Irene?
No.
Ken?
I'm going to admit, when I read the staff report, and I didn't turn the pages until I read the report and the follow-up, and I knew that there was a lot of discussion and the commissions were torn, I guess, many times, and then eventually came to the decision. And then I turned the page and saw your design, and I didn't like it at all. I thought it was, and excuse me, I don't want to, I thought it was tusks coming out of the ground. And I go, where's that coming from? I didn't, obviously, we didn't see any of the other designs. So, and then I looked at it over here at the model, and I didn't, I liked it even worse. And, or I didn't like it any better. But then I see this, because the staff report, the photocopy doesn't do it any justice. But this is a more accurate depiction of what, you know, what it's going to look like. And then your explanation on how you came together, and I can see that. And I didn't, I mean, I didn't really want to, I wanted to keep an open mind because, you know, it's very subjective and, you know, artists can really try to twist your mind and things, but...
He means that in a nice way.
You know, and those are actually accurate perceptions.
I'm an architect, and I mean, I don't like what architects say a lot either, so...
Well, then you know better than anyone. When you get an object out into space, it changes. In other words, so we really, we went to the site, we looked at it, we tried to figure what would fit within that location. And that probably gives a better view of what it would look like within the location.
It's not a large space.
No, it's not. It's not. So we wanted some kind of, something to give monumentality, but at the same time, you know, have a delicate, you know, aesthetic.
Also, we did think about vandalism, safety, maintenance issue. All these are beyond the artistic elements, but we have to make sure that those are covered. This is a public art piece. That's why we came up with this piece that are, nobody can climb up on and...
But although those are the, those are the primary considerations, but they have a big effect on the aesthetic. So, you know, we had a number of ideas, but that location is pretty private. You're not going to be able to, you know, patrol it all the time. So this is a piece that really is something that can stand alone, and it's not going to get vandalized.
And what's before us tonight to the staff, this is in regards to this vision and sculpture. It's not as far as the plates or the font or what goes on or who goes on or how it goes on. That's not what's before us. Is that correct?
I'd say that's correct. The only caveat I would add is the methodology for how people get recognized is in the policy. That's already been established. But yes, right now, it's simply the sculpture design. And we will, and the plaques and the seating would be, they would be an additional expense over time, and they would also be, yeah. So we would bring those back if necessary for...
So they go back to the two bodies and then come back to the council for review and approval? And is there a guesstimate of how many pla, I know it depends on how big they are, and that's not up there. Is there a guesstimate of what this would allow? 100, 200 per the pillar? Do we know? Or, I know it's based on the size and all that, but a guesstimate?
We have three sides.
Three sides and three pillars.
Three sides. So you've probably got, you know, hundreds per pillar.
Okay. And you also feel, obviously, based on the material, the durability, that'll all be, this will maintain itself and stay there long after we're all gone?
That's the whole point.
See, we can get our name on there at that point.
The powder coating surface...
Just thinking ahead.
The finish on the sculpture is a powder-coated surface, and it will also have a, what is that called?
Graffiti-proof.
Graffiti-proof. What it does is to easily remove the graffiti.
Very good.
Can I ask one? You mentioned in the nine-to-two vote, and then the two dissenting, they felt that it was too futuristic. Was that because of the stainless steel? Or was it just because of the shape?
Well...
Let John speak.
Actually, I also want to point out that two of our commissioners are here, excuse me, in the audience tonight. One from the Park and Recreation, one from Culture and Arts.
Are they two no votes?
One was a yes vote, one was a no vote.
Fair and balanced. I like that.
It was, it's a little balanced in the audience tonight. The color choice was changed from the stainless to the reddish before the gentleman in the audience voted no. So he saw it as the red color, not as the stainless. When it was the stainless, that's when each of the, each of the commissions still had many questions about it separately. We then called joint meetings of the commissions. We invited the artists to come to talk about it, and it was the full joint commission meetings when we changed the shape slightly, when we changed the coating, when we changed the coloring. So all of that happened prior to the nine-to-two vote.
Okay. Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Irene?
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just have a comment. And I would like to acknowledge all the work that both the Park and Rec Commission and the Art and Culture Commission have done. This is not an easy thing to pick art that's going to be standing there forever and ever. And I appreciate the artist's answers to it and his willingness to change his concept to something. I have to agree with Ken. When I first saw it in our packet, I thought, oh, my goodness. But this rendition is much more appropriate, I think, for this, the area and what you said. So I think we can all live with it. So I appreciate all the work you all did. It's not an easy thing.
And you should know that I had to work with Mr. Ibera for eight years on the great separation projects. You can only imagine. Just teasing, Ken. No, thanks to the artists. A wonderful job. And that's all of the, all of the artists. It's in the eye of the beholder, I guess. And it got down to this one. And congratulations. And thanks to all the commissioners. It's a lot of work. And it's very judgmental, but, you know, considering San Bruno, who we are, where we were, where we're going, it's very, very appropriate. I think it's nice.
I just would say that we've done a number of these commissions, and the meetings were very, very productive and actually very constructive. So it was a really good experience all the way down the line.
Good. Any other comments or action from the council?
Oh, now you want action, huh? Through the chair, I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Congratulations. We look forward to this. Item 10G, adopt a resolution approving agreement for joint fire operational and emergency medical services training and administrative services. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the council's being asked to request, requested to adopt a resolution approving agreement for joint fire operational EMS training and administrative services. The original joint training agreement between the cities of San Mateo, Central County, Nobry, and San Bruno expired in 2009. Since that time, the agencies have been in the process of determining the best alternative for continuing the program. Due to several personnel changes resulting from retirements and the ongoing consolidation study, we needed to analyze the potential training requirements for all the agencies. The most notable change in this agreement is the merging of the EMS and operational training division, sections into one division. The proposed agreement also provides for the addition of other agencies entering into the agreement that would reduce the cost to the participating agencies. One outstanding issue for the city of San Bruno is that San Bruno previously participated in the North County Training Division for EMS training and supervision. When San Bruno transferred to the Central Training Division several years ago, North County Fire Authority was reluctant to dismiss San Bruno's share of the North County EMS supervisor due to the cost share considerations for the participants of the North County agencies. While training with the Central County Division, San Bruno has continued to receive and pay for EMS supervision services from North County. The EMS supervision is required by the County EMS JPA contract with a private ambulance provider. The approved budget for training services is currently $148,500. That includes the operational EMS training as well as the EMS supervision. The proposed agreement will cost San Bruno $133,000 per year, and does include the EMS supervision from the Central County. Staff recommends terminating the current arrangement with North County, thereby reducing the training cost by $15,500. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So, through the chair, so chief, this is just consolidating a little bit, saving some money, and the training is comparable, if not better, in this system that we're bringing forward to us. Fair?
Since we have moved to Central, all our EMS mandated, mandatory training is conducted through the Central County Division.
Okay. I don't know if there are any other questions?
Any other questions?
If not, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Iber.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. 10H, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Verde Design Incorporated in the amount of $97,165 for design services for the Lyons Field Synthetic Grass Project.
Design a field?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Will Anderson. I'm a staff engineer in the Public Services Department, and I will be acting as project manager for the Lyons Field Synthetic Grass Project. I'm here tonight to present the project to you and make a recommendation regarding the award of a design contract. This project is part of the current capital improvements program, and it is envisioned to replace the existing natural grass with a synthetic turf system on the city-owned property, as highlighted by the red circle. The benefits of the completed project will include additional hours of field use, improved safety for the participants, and a reduction in city maintenance costs, specifically in regards to less irrigation, less fertilizer, and less staff time spent mowing and preparing the field. But to construct this project, we, the first steps will be to hire a qualified consultant to perform initially a pre-design report and then preparation of the bid documents. In the pre-design report, our chosen consultant will use the topographic survey that was previously completed specifically for this project, and use that to lay out alternatives to orient the field and stripe it for multiple uses. Our consultant will also provide recommendations on a specific type of synthetic turf and make recommendations to situate the proposed restroom concession stand building. Their scope of work will also analyze the available parking and compare that to the estimated peak usage of the field. The drainage will also be analyzed, both as far as the quantity and the quality, knowing the historically soggy conditions of the site, and the project will be in compliance with all current stormwater regulations. The drainage issue was highlighted in the initial RFP published by the city, and it was highlighted to all our consultants during the RFP process. So, we know it is an important issue to be addressed out there. Our consultant will also provide recommendations about potential sources of construction funding, whether it be through charitable organizations or grant fund opportunities. The pre-design report will also, our consultant will make a recommendation on a preferred alternative, and for that preferred alternative, prepare a construction cost estimate. And the, you know, once, there will also be at least one public meeting held, and it is anticipated to include the end users of the field. Once our pre-design report is in place, the consultant will prepare bid documents, which will consist primarily of plans, specifications, and a bid schedule. But before the plans are released for bidding, the project will be brought back to council to confirm the scope of the construction and to report back about the results of the construction fundraising efforts. And then, continuing with the scope of our consultant services, what's the project? Is that the bid? Our consultant will be available to assist and answer any questions that might arise during the bidding process, and they will also be in attendance at, you know, our mandatory pre-bid meeting for the contractors to address any questions that might arise. And the consultant we are recommending to perform this work is Verde Design. They're based out of Santa Clara, and they were chosen through RFP process, Request for Proposals process, which, you know, was publicly noticed and posted on the city's website. And the written proposals were reviewed, and the top proposals were invited in for oral interviews. And after all was said and done, Verde was the unanimous choice to, as the most qualified consultant, and we did follow up with reference checks, and their previous experience includes many synthetic turf projects along the peninsula, from San Francisco down to San Jose, and many cities in between. It's staff's recommendation that the council authorize the city manager to execute our standard consultant contract with Verde Design to perform the design services for the Lyons Field Synthetic Grass Project. This concludes my presentation, and I'm open to address any questions you may have.
Through the chair, real quick, one question I have right now is, you alluded to it, the drainage. I think you used the word soggy, or I think that was a polite way to describe it. Over the years, that's just always, it has been a problem. And so, I think this is, and you've already alluded to it, that it's a major factor in the process, but it really needs to be highlighted and realized, because my concern is this investment and all of these monies being directed toward this project, and then that isn't addressed or isn't corrected. And then, how much is it truly going to cost to correct that so the drainage is accurate, I mean, is how it should be, which obviously, today, it is not. So, I'm just a little leery about really getting that answer and the true costs of what that would take to correct that.
Yeah. Okay, that will be part of our design review process or, you know, pre-development report. The turf system will address both surface drainage as well as subsurface drainage, and our consultant will monitor or see if the adjacent sites next to Lyons Field can be alleviated in the process, but with those parcels being non-city-owned, owned by the school district, you know, if there are simple fixes that we can approach the school district about, yeah, that's something that potentially could happen.
My concern with that is not necessarily, you know, it getting wet, or, I mean, I'm sure that it'll be drained, but will there be an adequate substructure so that it doesn't settle, you know, and over time? I mean, the life of this, you know, the life of this field, the drainage is 40 to 50 years, so, I mean, I would think that, I mean, it's, you're pretty much going to redo the whole substructure of that area, you know, for it to drain perfectly almost, you know. My concern also, my questions are also timing. I mean, we have a representative that probably can't wait to get his soccer teams out there, you know, playing, you know, at least 20 hours a day, right? What can the community, you know, look forward to as far as, you know, when we cut a ribbon on this field?
That will be another issue, which we will solicit recommendations from our consultant. There are two basic options to construct during, you know, spring, summer, which is more weather-friendly, but then again, that is during the peak use of the field. Another option would be to construct in the off-peak season, however, you know, the weather elements may be working against us. So, our consultant will definitely be solicited for recommendations.
I want to make one comment on the drainage issues. One very specific criteria for our selection process of the design team was their experience and their proved knowledge in drainage issues.
Yeah, they have previous experience putting fields in Foster City, which, similar to our site, has high groundwater elevations.
My last comment is that we've allocated $200,000 for design here, and it's only $97,000. So, does that mean that that's it? That you, there's no other design costs for this field?
We're anticipating upon completion of this, we will have a biddable set of documents.
Okay.
But previously, there was a topographic survey, which was funded out of that $200,000 also.
I don't have exactly the estimated overall design cost for the project. You will see the overall estimated cost in the CIP document. I don't have right now available exactly, already a certain expenditure level already took place, and I just, beside this $97,000, I don't have the exact number, what will be the final estimated expenditure level for the design of this project.
It's safe to say it's significantly less than $200,000, though.
Probably less, but not, it's more than the $97,000. I just don't have the certain number, between those two numbers.
Still significantly less than $200,000.
You are always correct, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Action?
You will round that one for me. This is exciting, this is an exciting project, right?
This is great.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Iber.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item number 11, reports of commissions, boards, and committees that are on this evening. Item 12, comments from council members.
Through the chair. Just wanted to take a minute and tell, on behalf of the council, that Connie Jackson, our city manager, last Friday spoke at the Council of Cities, which is held monthly and this last Friday. And what it is, is city managers, mostly elected council members from our neighboring communities, show up, and she was the guest speaker, which, of course, the interest is still very much alive, which is in regards to September 9th, lessons learned, things that we could do to better improve ourselves for disasters and future issues that may arise in our neighboring communities. And Connie went ahead and spoke, and I think did a good job for our city, and again, had to go through the process of what we all experienced not too long ago. But in her commentary, it was very much a testimony to the staff that she works with every day, the service level that they've been offering, the challenges they've been facing, and how proud she was of what they've done to help support her throughout these last couple of months, and will be continuing to do so. So, the council was there to support her and support the staff and represent the community during this, and we just wanted to acknowledge you for the good job that you did that Friday night, representing the city and acknowledging the staff, and we thank the staff as well.
Any other comments from council members? Okay, we are going to, into a closed session. We have three items. First, the city manager and human resources director requested closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding direction for labor negotiations with the public safety mid-management unit. Item B is to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, three cases, California Government Code Section 54954.9A, and item C, consider appointment of city attorney, California Government Code Section 54957. And we won't have any reportable action this evening, and this meeting will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled city council meeting in November, December 14th, 2010, at 7:00 PM, right here at the senior center. And on behalf of the entire city council, a very, very happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.